Call in the order of town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut. Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. We'll start with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Michelle, if you could provide roll call? Thank you.
Mayor McNally.
Present.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Downs, Byers.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
And Councilor Mace.
Here.
And Councilor Poligia.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have two public hearings today, so at seven, probably 7:30 and 7:45, we will pause for those public hearings. We will start. I will accept a motion to accept the minutes, previous minutes, item A, June 7th, 2022, WPCA and Town Council Meeting.
So moved with one correction to item 13i on page 11 of the minutes. The motion should read that it was seconded by Councilor Poligia.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilor Angeloni. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. And item B, June 13th, 2022, special meeting of Town Council?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you.
There should be two abstentions from the group that's here tonight.
You're correct. Who was not in that?
Abelson and Mace were not at that.
Okay, so Mr. Abelson, Mr. Mace, all abstained from the special meeting?
Abstention.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the regular Town Council meeting. Item three, Town Manager's Report. Michael?
Yes, good evening. The first item is the COVID report, which is in your packet, most notably that the numbers are trending downward, which is great, and that's depicted on, I believe, slide six for North Branford. That shows as of June 15th, halfway through the month, 27 cases recorded in comparison to May's number of 226 cases there, so trend in the right direction. I also have information from the state of Connecticut confirming that our positivity rate has declined as well to 11.5 percent, and again, those are lagging indicators, so we continue to hope that those numbers continue to trend in that direction, lower, so everything appears to be going in that direction at this point, so I think that's all really I can say about that. There isn't really a whole lot of more testing, other than the news, obviously, about young children and the vaccinations and testing for that age group. So we'll stay tuned to that, and maybe there'll be more information that we can pass out, disseminate on that subject, get the word out to the public, but we'll have to keep you posted on that.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, did you? I got a thing on my phone that said there were two new variants coming out soon. Did you run into that?
Yeah, I don't have the detail. I just know that the Health Department is monitoring and does tell us that there are variants consistently, but some are in our area, some are not, so I can try to get a follow-up from East Shore and just kind of send that out to the council with detail, but I'm sorry, I don't have that for you, but there are variants.
I just, I got a thing on my phone.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's just important everybody continues to do the protocols and we'll get through it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item B, Report on Permit Project Building Committee?
Yeah, I'll have to defer on that one. I was not present for the meeting last night. I have some brief information with respect to their, an issue or two with respect to the PD that the committee is working through and Michelle Knockwood is working through with Silver Petroselli. That's about the extent of what I have in terms of a report for that, but I'll certainly be ready for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything to say? Nothing with STW?
No, you know, just again, the intermediate school, working along, and so is Stanley T. Williams.
Okay. All right, seeing nothing else there. We'll move on to item four. Time here, 15:10. Committee Events and Presentations. Do you have these? Can we, we can't start the public?
No, you'll have to skip and come back. You can't start any earlier than the publicized time.
Here, okay. All right, we'll move on to item five, Citizen Statements, Petitions and Correspondence. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, resignation of Michael Paulus, Town Manager. Michael, if you'd like to take the floor for a moment here and say a few words?
Yeah, I'll, thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community for the past nine years, you know, starting in 2013. I've seen a few different councils and enjoyed my time and interaction with all of them. I understand that, you know, it's a tough job that you do in terms of your service to the community, and it is democracy, and sometimes it's not pretty, it's not easy, and there's a lot of hand-wringing and debate and discussion that goes on, but this is a great community. I've really enjoyed my time here, and it's been a growth opportunity for me, and I've really enjoyed myself, and I have an opportunity to move on to the town of Plainville, Connecticut, and I'm looking forward to that, but it's sort of bittersweet for me and certainly mixed emotions, but my time here, I've really enjoyed myself. It is quality people, quality community, and I'm just hoping that I can help in any way in the transition and assistance to finding your next Town Manager.
We appreciate that. We certainly will miss you as well, and we thank you for your time and service here at North Branford. We'll fill in the public as to kind of the details of your last days in North Branford in the coming days, and of course with the search for our new Town Manager for North Branford. So thank you again for your time and service. We do appreciate it, and obviously, your friend in North Branford, we hope that you keep in touch.
I will, thank you.
May I speak?
Please.
Just want to thank you, Mike. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best, right? It's been a real pleasure working with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I second that. Like I said on the phone, I wish you a lot of luck in the future.
Thanks, Ron.
In the new town. Plainville's came in with a great asset. It's a much shorter commute, right?
Yes. It is indeed.
Great with cost prices. Okay. Thank you again. On to item seven, let's make sure our time was. Unfinished Business Discussion and Action. Item A, Training for Fire Department. Mike, Anthony?
This is ready to rock. This comes up later on your agenda under HC. Basically, at the end of the 1920 fiscal year, the council allowed the fire department to take some surplus funds and to put it into the Capital Project Fund for the 2021 year, under the term of training adjuncts for the fire department. Training adjuncts is kind of a broad term, and what's happened subsequently is the decision has been made to take that money, coupled with some contributions we received from the Patel family, and construct a training building, support building, down at our training facility down behind Public Works. And this is going to do a two-step process. It's going to be a two-bay structure. One bay will be used for storage of the equipment we need for training, ladders and extinguishers, things like that, and the second bay will be used as a classroom. So as we do training evolutions at the training tower, we can come back, get together, talk about it, review, make it a true learning experience. We did have to go through wetlands. That's why we held off coming back to you guys for the discussion. Wetlands has approved it. We do have the approval for a five-year window. The next step would be to go out to bid, because the proposal that Deputy Chief Colangelo had received is about a year old at this point, and we know the world's gone crazy in the last year. So we have about a $45,000 budget between the money that the Town Council let us put forward and the contributions that the Patel family has given us. So I'm back before you, because training adjuncts, again, was kind of a broad category. Want to make sure you guys have no issue with us. It's still in the realm of training, but training adjuncts could be anything from hose simulators, roof simulators, things like that. We're using it for a training building. I want to ensure there's no problem from the council perspective, but that's what we want to do with that. Again, it did go through wetlands. They came down, met with us, saw the area. We're trying to clean up some of the debris down there, make it a little more attractive. The two bays on the back side will have an overhang to keep the pallets and things we burn and the burned building dry, so we're looking to clean up the area a little bit and again, capture the ability to have a training facility that we can go back and talk about the evolutions we do at the site as well. So there's no problem. Michelle, as you see later on the agenda, we're going to go out to bid and get prices, and the whole project may go nowhere. Again, we have about a $45,000 budget, and depending on how the world has changed in the last year, it may not happen. I mean, the approval lasts for five years from wetlands. Maybe we'll see if we get additional contributions. If we can't make it with this go around, then we'll just keep that in the back of our hat. But I wanted to get your blessing that training adjuncts was broad enough for you guys that we're going to use this building for training purposes, and wish you any problems with that.
So there was talk about possibly having room to store?
Yeah, the third bay was to put the third engine, the extra engine, no, that's not going to happen.
Okay.
There was concerns from wetlands as they related to storage close to the river in case anything leaked. It becomes an access issue for us, but we've used that truck, quite honestly, probably four times in the last month, as we've had apparatus go down for repairs. So if we had it back in the facility, Frank would have to plow back there and keep that accessible. So by having it in one of the stations, it makes it really accessible for us. But yeah, that was one of the earlier concepts, make it a three-bay, storage, apparatus, and training room, and that got mixed, and we're going to just go with the two.
Well, I saw the carport in the back, so I didn't know if that.
Yeah, that's just to keep the pallets out of the weather.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all that's for.
Would other towns be able to use this too, or is it just?
Yeah, we have an arrangement. All our contiguous towns we mutually partners with, we let them use it. We let the National Guard use it, come down and burn in our building.
I know that they use that. Okay, I was, I know they use the other building.
Right. And we'd all be part of the, part and parcel of the whole thing. And again, if we go back to the issue with the Wi-Fi, you could have it remotely controlled as far as key access. If the National Guard's going down, you can punch in, punch it in, open the door for them, and do a lot of things that we're doing manually now, so again, that'd be a plus. As long as you guys are cool with it, we'll, later on, we'll have Michelle go out to bid and see what the numbers come in to bid.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Anthony. Appreciate that. All right, on to Discussion and Action for ARPA Funds. I believe we're going to table this until September when we plan our next meeting. Mike, if you would make note?
Make a note, yep, for September.
Let's look at the first meeting in September to have that meeting.
6:00 PM time, same timeframe?
Sure, 6:00 PM timeframe. That's suffice for everyone here? Good, okay. Okay. Check time, okay. Fox and Road Route 80 sewer extension, table till May 3rd, or table from May 3rd. I believe we have to continue to table this due to the fact that we said about five months out. Victor, do you want to jump up? Sure.
So I think if it's okay with the council, I could probably give updates along the way through the progress of the five-month process of developing the report. I'm going to try to meet with Weston and Sampson first week of July to kind of, you know, get the ball rolling on this after we hopefully get through the contract signing, things like that. We're still finishing off the final touches on the agreement to work with them, so.
Okay, appreciate that. So would you say a month or so out for our next?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay, so why don't we make note, we'll table this until the first meeting in August. We only have one meeting in July, so we'll kick it out to the first meeting in August, and we can just have a report then just on progress, even if it's just a moment of time.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and item D, Discussion and Possible Action for Draft Agreement with BOE to Use of the Auger House? Where do we stand on this?
We had time, as you know, to write a very simple agreement, and we did that, and we communicated that with the Board Council. Board Council then tried to raise two particular concerns, both of which are covered by the document that we sent them, so then they said they wanted to add boilerplate to the document, and we are waiting for that to come in. Boilerplate are all those terms that you see near the end of an agreement sometimes, but the whole idea with doing a simple agreement was to avoid like a 10-page agreement or something like that between the town and the board, so we have yet to receive it, and that's our update.
Okay, so we will table this until the next meeting. We'll hope that.
It's been with the board since, what, you know, quite a while.
Maybe you can just send an email to the superintendent, because the motion that was made last year was only good through June of this year for the Auger House, so the sooner we can get this resolved, the better, because I'm sure that they are looking to move in, I mean, to keep use of the facility when school resumes.
Do they use it during the summertime? Are they summer programs?
No. It's for a specific program, and they're not there during the summertime, so, but just to move things along.
All right, so we'll send an email to urge, excuse me, to get this done, yeah, due to, want to have that motion not to expire. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, we're at 7:27. We will, we'll just broach into new business, so item A, New Business Discussion and Action. Item A, Review Contract for STW Tennis Courts. Mind you, we have about two and a half minutes to do this. Do we have?
Jesse's here.
Jesse, you want to, is this a quick thing, or should I hold on for just a moment? So I'm going to have to interrupt you in about two minutes.
Well, we can start the public meeting after 7:30.
Yeah, you can, right.
If we wanted to have her finish.
Yeah, but I think.
Then why don't you, why don't we get, I'd rather move this meeting along if possible. Thank you.
This is based on the number of questions. So for capital improvement, you guys approved the STW court refinishing for $230,000. Based on the contract, we are going off of a consortium, I think is the term, with Equalist Group. The bid came back, or the fee came back at $290,000, so the contract states the fee, the fee schedule, everything else, which you have. For the additional $60,000, because the council allocated $230,000, we would be looking to take that $60,000 out of the Park Maintenance Reserve account, and there is funding in that for that additional $60,000. So this would include 10 pickleball courts and one hockey court with a divider between the pickleball and the hockey that is not permanent. Any questions?
I saw the work going on. It looks like this work is coming right along, so that's great.
It actually is starting a few months earlier than anticipated, because originally it was going to be this fall, and then painting in, you know, using next spring, but with his work schedule, it's starting now, and we will probably be able to use it this fall yet for pickleball. So it is coming along, and they can save the fencing, so that's what's down right now. Yes, they took it down so that he can do it. The fencing will go up after he has the post-tension court in. I met with him on Monday of this week. I saw him there, and then they'll be locked during the month that it has to cure.
So unfortunately, yeah, those courts will be down for the month of August, or, excuse me, July and into part of August, but then we'll have them back online significantly sooner versus them being offline for all of the fall and probably into early spring. He said he wouldn't be able to paint until May, possibly, if we had the original timeline, so he was able to squeeze us in a little bit early, which is wonderful. And just so everybody's aware in regards to the contract, this is a vendor that we've worked with for both Northford and Memorial. We're familiar with his services and everything else.
And you should all have a revised red line in front of you that Rich could walk you through in terms of those changes. We had to add the C, I'm sorry, prevailing wage, but he can certainly walk you through that, but this has been a work in progress today in terms of trying to take advantage of the timing and getting the contractor in, so Jesse and myself and Brian and Rich worked on this today, and that's before you, so if you have any questions, Rich can walk you through that. But as Jesse said, this is reliable, dependable contractor. We've used before, been no issues, and we've been happy and satisfied with the level of service that we've received from this company.
That's great.
And the contractor has seen all the red lines and has no issues.
Great. Well, thank you for all this effort as well. Thank you very much.
On my side.
Okay, any questions by the council for the contract? I went through it, seeing none that are of concern.
Sixty thousand.
Your special.
Sixty thousand from Park Maintenance Reserve, and then the $230,000 was allocated in capital for July 1st.
We have to approve this, correct?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
And to authorize the Town Manager to execute it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract to RS Site &amp; Sports LLC for the STW courts at a cost of $290,000, and to authorize the Town Manager to execute this contract.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion with Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
We approved the $290,000, but I really do $230,000 plus she's taking the $60,000 out of her funds.
Right, so we're just.
Really not $290,000.
No, it is.
It's $290,000 with two separate costs.
No, I understand it's $290,000. You just approved $290,000. Do we not have to approve the $60,000 for her funds?
It's in her budget.
It's already in her budget.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Only to the county.
Okay, good question. I'm good.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. We got Michael in there as well. Thank you, Michael. All right, that passes, thank you.
No, it's fine. No, they could hear you. That's good, yeah.
All right, I am going to pause the regular Town Council meeting, and we are going to open the public hearing for regarding revision to ATV ordinance?
No, let me just read the, you have to read the notice, so. The notice of the public hearing. The Town, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number 2022-3, which amends ordinance number 260 entitled "An Ordinance to Regulate Pocket Bikes, Minibikes, Dirt Bikes, All-Terrain Vehicles, and the Like," as summarized below. The amendments correct section numbers and add a procedure to appeal fines, fees, or penalties. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 8th day of June 2022, Lisa Valenti, Town Clerk, and it was published in The Sound on June 16th, 2022, and the public comments could be emailed to public-comment@townofnorthbranfordconnecticut.com.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any comments that we received via email?
I have one.
Would you please read that, Michael?
This is to public comments from Deborah Stepnowski. Sorry, I do not have the address. It's a Northford address, but I'll try to get that for the clerk. And I'll just read, in addition, I did this email, but there were, there are actually three. One, the first one was about a reference to an article in West Hartford on some of the publicity that West Hartford has done through the implementation of their ordinance, and then she sent a picture, a logo of a person operating a motorcycle down the middle of the street. Her comments are two points. One, and this is from Deborah Stepnowski, "I believe golf carts are not totally exempt. I think the only stipulation is that they cannot be driven on public streets by anyone after dark." Two, also, the last I knew, the police department did not own sound meters to enforce the noise ordinance. These meters are under $200 and only take about 20 minutes to learn how to use. They should also match the zoning department's sound meter or have the same device as the zoning department. These instruments are necessary pieces of law enforcement equipment, and not only to force the present noise ordinance, but also as a part of the new ATV ordinance. That's it.
All right, we thank Stepnowski for her comments. Are there any other comments for those in the chambers tonight? If there's nothing else, we'll be emailing?
None that I have.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, I believe we can close this public hearing. I'll accept a motion to close.
So moved, second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right.
So the meeting was, public hearing was closed at 7:35?
7:35, thank you. Okay. On to second item, the public hearing regarding, we can't do that till 7:45?
45.
45, okay, so we'll come back to that. Let's move on to the regularly posted meeting. Okay. Back to the jet item 8B, Review and Approval of Drug Policy. Subset Public Works Federal Highway Administration FHWA and all Town Employees.
Yeah, so this is something that the new ruling and issue of cannabis use has required us to take a look and revamp and revise and upgrade our policy, so we have actually, two, we have the federal highway drug use policy that needs to be amended, and that applies to our Public Works with CDL drivers, and then we have general town-wide, all Town Employees policy, but I think you have a revision there that we had tweaked. I talked to Chris from Rich's office as well. But the first one is predominantly just the Public Works CDL drivers, and so that language is redlined, and those changes are there for your review, and hope that we could have this adopted tonight. It has been thoroughly vetted through Rich's office. Actually, I want to thank them also for spotting some of the typos and cleanups that were necessary. This is rather an old document, I believe, but I appreciate the thoroughness that they put through.
Totally, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town of North Branford's policy implementing the Federal Highway Administration regulations on drug use and alcohol misuse.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, passes, thank you. And then we have to also do it for item two, all in please?
Yes, item two as well. It's just a two-pager, but there were some things that Chris and I discussed, and I believe you have a copy of a redlined version. You should have that.
It's on page 67.
67?
Yeah, actually, you should have a, you should have a hard copy. You have a hard copy?
No.
No.
No, just the.
Just go ahead.
So I'd like to make.
Oh, did I get, maybe I did that.
Mike here, there.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the substance abuse policy as amended. That applies to all Town Employees.
Second?
All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. All right, on to item C, as indicated by Mr. Esposito earlier, Review and Approval of Bid Specification for Bid Number 9, 2022-2023, Train Support Building Services. Any motion?
So Anthony, you looked over all these, this bid specs, and you're fine with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve bid spec for Bid Number 9, 2022-23, Training Support Building Services.
Second. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. Still some time here. On to item D, review and approval of revision of ATV ordinance.
We can't do that yet?
We can't do that yet?
Yeah, we did.
Well, you can't.
Oh, that's right, we closed that one. That one we can do.
Go past that. E, we cannot do.
Well, no, we can do D.
Oh, we can do, no, we can do D because we already closed ordinance, okay. So, okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to ordinance number 260, also referred to as the ATV ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, we'll skip E for now. Go on to F, discussion action of increased, increasing purchase thresholds.
Yes, so previous, you had the hearing and discussion and then it's just back to you on whether or not you want to take any action on that.
I do understand that there are some counselors that aren't here today that were opposed to this action. I've been open this for discussion amongst the counselors if there's, if there's any discussion or if there's someone to entertain a motion. Can we table this until everybody's here? We certainly can table this. Okay, why don't, is that, it sounds like a suffice thing to do amongst the group?
Sure.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we table this until we have our full council here? We have a further discussion. So we're tabling item F. On to, on to item G, suspense list for 2022.
The list you have before you is larger than you typically see and throughout the years there's been a lot of confusion on the term suspense list. You know, people would look around the list and say, hey, I know this guy is my neighbor. Why are you erasing his tax bill? We're not erasing his tax bill. All this is doing is taking it from one list and putting it on a second list to clean up the true receivables. As you can see, some of them cannot locate. It means we've sent bills out, they come back undeliverable, there's deceased, obviously, which is kind of self-explanatory.
Yep.
Out of business for the commercial folks. So again, these are not bills that are being erased, eliminated. The interest is still accruing. If they were to register a car, motor vehicle, they'd still have to pay the bill. But in the past, there's been a lot of angst about the term suspense and a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about it. So Judy came in and what a lot of towns do, quite honestly, is after the year is done, throw the entire balance into suspense. We've never done that, again, because of the size of the numbers and sometimes the appearance that we're doing something to, you know, eliminate somebody's taxes and that, that's certainly not the case. So the number, again, before you is larger than typically you have and what Judy's trying to do is just clean it up and make the grand list, the outstanding list, a little more realistic.
This section, 12-165, that's the state?
Yes, state statutes.
Somebody should tell the state that women are also tax collectors. They don't, they only have his in there. I just happened to read that carefully because I was curious about what a suspense list was.
Yeah.
So, so I went through, I just have, I, I know it's mostly motor vehicle, personal property. It's not real estate.
Correct. Real estate will still be coming to you guys subsequently.
Right.
With a list of people that will kick over to the town attorney's office if that's what you guys choose to do.
Right.
This is strictly motor vehicle and personal property. You are correct.
Okay, so, so there, there's people on there that I know.
Personally.
Live in town yet.
Yep.
Like, how can we not, why don't we collect those taxes then? If they're still here, living in town.
A lot of times what happens is if we send it to Anthony at, you know, Forestview Road, well, Anthony has a PO box now. Didn't change his records. So we sending it all the time to Forestview Road, it keeps coming back, undeliverable. No one knows Anthony has a PO box now or vice versa. Our records show Anthony has a PO box. You send it there, it comes back. Send it there, it comes back. Well, Anthony gets his mail now at Forestview Road, didn't change his records. So in the eyes of all the, I mean, they could spend, again, goes back to the eighty-twenty principle. We spend eighty percent of the time on twenty percent of the dollars over there. It's ridiculous. I mean, the talk, the state taking this over for years, it'd be the greatest thing that could happen because the stack today, no lie, three inches of mail came back today from the bills that went out over the weekend. Bad addresses. People move, the condos are notorious, people, you know, transient kind of population.
Are we using the DMV? Because I thought you could, you could, it hit you at the DMV where you couldn't register your vehicle.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do. The process we have is, it's when they become delinquent. So after the January cycle, in February, we send delinquent notices, March, we send demand notices, April, we send, hey, we're going to send you to the DMV. So it's not until next April for these bills that will go, the current year bills will go to the DMV file and they're put-ons, it's called. So, because the person, the person may pay.
So regardless of if their name stays on this list or moves over to the other one.
They still owe the money.
If the same actions are going to be taken with the DMV.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it's, it's mind-boggling, you're right. You see people that you know left and right on there. And again, a lot of it's bad addresses. They may refuse to open the mailbox, but again, it's eighteen percent interest that's accruing. So if you move them, if they had a tax, if you know you had a tax bill, why would you just not pay it? Right? Why would you try to, you know, skirt the system? We'll get our eighteen percent eventually or you go to DMV, register your car, you can't register your car until you come in. You know, there's stories for everybody, but your, your, your observation is, is pretty sound, you know?
I have a suggestion, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
I would check with the North Branford Post Office because on your envelopes when they go out.
Right.
You could request address correction requested.
We do get those. Of the, of the three-inch stack today, I would say probably two inches of it had the new address on it and one inch does not.
Okay.
So, I mean, the clerk there, they could spend days, you go Google searching and try to find somebody. What happens typically, if we have a good relationship with our collection agency that we use and they will have, they have more skip tracing capabilities, they'll actually go in and find Anthony's correct address for you and let us know.
But that was my next question is, do we have a collection agency?
Yeah, the, the, the tax process that the council has adopted is, again, the February, March, April, April comes, we send warrants to the marshal for 60 days. After the 60 days expires, then it goes to the collection agency. And again, they, they tack on their fifteen percent charge. So that's the process that, that the, that's the form of collection policy that the tax office uses.
But when did all of that start? Because these go back to 2007.
Yep.
So when did the collection agency start?
Years.
Yeah.
They, they just, they just don't pay their bill. So all the efforts that they have, they've tried to collect it unsuccessful.
So do they go to small claims court or do they not go to small claims court?
Negative.
Because some of these are into thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And again, remember, it's eighteen percent interest that's accruing. So that thousand-dollar bill from 2013 is probably a three-thousand-dollar bill now when all is said and done.
I know, but part of my fear is that by the time we get around to it, some of these people have passed away and you're never going to collect the money.
Right.
In turn, they still owe us.
There's not, I mean, like I said, we, we exhaust all efforts by using the marshal. The marshal has some advanced skip tracing capabilities as well. And then the collection agency has even enhanced skip tracing capabilities. You know, they, they, we do collect money, but again, obviously, there's money out there that's, that's.
Well, what I hear about like New Haven, when people owe back taxes, they go and they lock their wheels, so.
That's.
Did you ever hear of that?
Put the boom.
Some cities, they have a scanner and it scans the license plate. They owe back taxes.
Right.
They put the thing around their tires so they can't move the car.
Yeah, no, you, you could, you could certainly do a booting, a booting site. Yeah, I mean, that, that's an option.
Only if it's, if it's on their, if it's in their driveway, you can't touch.
Right.
That's an option.
Right. So I mean, that, that's certainly an option if the council wants to explore that. We could, we could pursue that.
Well, you're looking at $240,000.
It's real money.
It's a lot of money.
And I said, in the past, the, the number that, that the form of.
It's also 15 years, that $240,000, because it goes back to 2007. Now, had, had we taken care of this, some of these numbers could have been given to us years ago.
Previously.
It just, so happens, the interim tax collector is trying to clean up the books.
Clean up.
And if that had been done on a regular basis over time, if, we wouldn't see this number.
Right.
I mean, real estate is a different.
Oh, yeah, different animal, totally.
Totally different. This is, this, normally, we do not see this many motor vehicle or personal property.
Well, I guess they're trying to clean it up because now it's being handed over to us and we have to decide what we're going to do.
Right. Every person on here has gone through all the steps of the process. We've sent the, you know, demand, the delinquents, they've gone through the marshal, they've gone through the collection agency and they remain out there. So, like I said before, the, the issue is that there was always a lot of pushback from the council about the whole concept of suspense. So you became kind of gun-shy about bringing big numbers before the council because it was, it was misconceived that we were, you know, writing people's bills off, which is not the case.
Okay.
So that's why the number's larger than, than you usually see.
So is it an ask?
So there's a motion here.
We have to approve?
You have to approve.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council accepts the recommendation of the tax collector and agrees to put the following taxpayers on the list provided onto the suspense list pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 12-165.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, exactly what does that mean? It's on the suspense list or what is that?
It just, it just, it stays as a receivable, open on their books.
Yeah.
So that if, you know, pick a name, they need to register a car at DMV, it's going to flag saying, hey, you owe North Branford taxes. They're going to come in and have to square that up before they are able to, some of them move out of state, so it's not an issue anymore for them. They could be in California now for all we know. So this is a moot point in their life. So again, that whole DMV, the whole car tax issue, it's disproportionate, the amount of time we spend on such little dollars. And some of them are big dollars, but, you know, fifty dollars, thirteen dollars, fifty-nine dollars. You could spend, you could spend three clerks over there all day doing Google search and trying to find somebody and getting an address and it's just, it's, God bless you.
I, I understand all of that there and just have a hard time accept, or understanding.
Yep.
If these things are, you know, 14 years old.
Right.
How are these people registering their cars every couple of years?
God bless.
Please, I'm telling the truth. I don't give a fuck. Registered their cars all these years.
Well, it could be a lot of them move, move out, it's a valid point. A lot of them move out of town. A lot of them maybe get married, change their name. A lot of them sometimes it's Anthony, sometimes it's Anthony P. Esposito, sometimes it's Anthony Esposito Jr. Those are all separate accounts in the eyes of DMV. So it could be the same person playing a little bit of a game if you want to, you know, which happens, quite honestly. I mean, sometimes it's an error. Sometimes you spell Esposito wrong, let's say, or something, it becomes an I, that's a different account. You can go delinquent on that account and, and never pay your bill. You know, so it depends how DMV registers. Sometimes they're wrong towns. We get many situations where, you know, maybe it's, it comes back as, as a North Branford town, it goes to North Branford PO, you know, PO, because it's North Branford, they come back saying, no, it's not us. Well, it's a Northford PO. So we got, it's a lot of that same town, cross zip code kind of thing.
Well, I agree with you because many years ago, my tax bills were going to Gale Drive in North Haven.
Yeah, it happens.
So what happens?
Till I got stopped by the cops.
Well, we have an error.
Yep.
In the way of a name or an address stipulated by Counselor Mace and it's accrued interest. Does the taxpayer have the ability to fight that interest being that they weren't aware of this tax bill?
No. No. What, what we could do sometimes is, say the bill goes to Branford by mistake or something like that.
Yeah.
And it's legitimately a mistake. When we issue a new tax bill today, they're given 30 days to pay.
Mm-hmm.
But that's between the assessors office, sometimes the assessor in Branford will call us or North Haven or Gil, whatever town may happen to be the case, hey, we have Jeff McMillan on, on our list, he doesn't live here anymore, he lives in Northford. We add him here, give him, give him a new bill, give him 30 days to pay. I mean, people know if you have a car, you're going to get a tax bill.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it's, it's kind of mind-boggling. I agree with you.
Small amounts, though.
Some of them are, some of them are large, as Counselor Mace mentioned.
Thirty dollars, a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, businesses that had vehicles and if they're not in business anymore, you know, they're just.
Yeah.
They didn't care.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Okay, we're going to take a moment and move over back to our item four, community events and presentations, to 7:45, public hearing regarding permanent project building committee. Suppose if you would read that?
Sure.
Sorry, Anna, I have to go. Thank you.
Twenty-five. I use the little clues over here. Well, yeah, I just, I have it written, it's just the suspense list was so long. Okay, so the notice of a public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 at 7:45 in the North Branford Town Hall Council chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance 2022-4, which amends chapter 73 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Permanent Project Building Committee as summarized below. The amendments increase the number of regular members from five to seven, sets the terms for new members, and removes obsolete language. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this eighth day of June 2022. Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk. It was published in the Sound on June 16th and email public comments to public-comment@townofnorthbranfordct.com.
Pending a formal opinion from our council, I would strike to table this. I'll second that. I can't, I can't motion, so someone has to motion.
I didn't hear what you said.
Pending a, a formal opinion from our council, I'm, I'm striking to table this, although I can't call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, I'm sorry, Counselor Diamond. Seconded by Counselors, a code.
I'll point your order, I just need to know, table it for how long? Give us, or a condition?
So a couple of things, if I may procedurally, you want to, you, you want to open this and then move to table it, I would say to the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll have an opinion for you then.
Okay, so I'll open for comment? Okay, so I'll open for a public comment?
And then move to table.
And then, as long as there's none, move to table. Okay, then do I, does my motions suffice?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Diamond?
Diamond, good. Thank you.
So, the motion is to, from?
Table to July.
Table until the next.
To July, the first July meeting. Once we have a formal opinion by our town attorney.
Will there be comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Well, there's a motion to table, once a motion to table has been made, there's no discussion.
He's exactly right. Motion to table is not supposed to be, any discussion after that.
I was also saying that it was going to be open and then.
You opened it and then you moved to table.
It's done.
No discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so, any discussion amongst the councils already done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained, all right? Motion to table has been set to next meeting. Okay, then we're going to move on to the agenda to Item H, closeout of capital project funds. Anthony?
Yes, in the 2223 capital page, which is attached, you'll see in the other funding column, a notice of $133,000 that was brought forward as you were creating the budget. This basically is the mechanics to close out the two capital project funds to move that $133,000.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion. Whereas the 2013-14 Capital Project Fund Construction Fund 462 was created to separately account for the capital projects funded in the 2013 fiscal year, and whereas the project delineated in this fund are deemed to be complete, and whereas there remains a balance of approximately $31,000 of cash in that fund, and all of the balance will be identified as one of the other funds referenced above in the 2022-23 CIP. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council directs the Treasurer-Finance Director to reappropriate the entire balance of Fund 462 to the 2022-23 Capital Improvements Plan and Fund 462 to be closed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you.
All right, the next motion is, whereas the 2014-15 Capital Project Fund Construction Fund 463 was created to separately account for the capital projects funded in 2014 and 15, and whereas the project delineated in this fund are deemed to be complete, and whereas there remains a balance of approximately $102,000 of cash in that fund, and all of that balance will be identified as one of the other funds referenced above in the 2022-23 CIP. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council directs the Treasurer-Finance Director to reappropriate the entire balance of Fund 463 to the 2022-23 Capital Improvements Plan and Fund 463 to be closed.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Onto I finish report for month end, May 21, 2022.
I think it should be 31, May 21.
Yeah, it's a typo in there, it should be 31.
You're right, thank you. It's not one of those.
Kind of doing this one now. It makes another one on it.
Anthony, change if things are out here.
I was out here. The.
It must be.
I'm like Ron Burgi.
It must not be unbelievable.
Remarkable, unremarkable. No, it still remains unremarkable. Again, look at the points that I typically pick out. The top line tax collections, 99.5% of budget compared to 99.3% last year, so that's a good news. Overall revenue, 98.8% of budget compared to 98.3, again, good news. Overall, on the expense side of the House, we're 85.3% expended versus 87.9, so a couple percent ahead of there. The same culprits that are over expended. The mayor and council line is a function of the audit. If you may recall, we had to do some federal single audit testing that wasn't accounted for previously due to some issues. Technology's been over expended for most of the year. The town attorney line is now showing over expended. Again, I think due to the labor negotiations that were not properly budgeted enough for. The insurance is over, we talked about that previously. That's all the new vehicles that we're getting around town. And the debt service, that's just a function of the refinancing costs that were unknown at the time the budget was created. So, it remains unremarkable.
Unremarkable. Questions? All right, change a motion?
No motion.
Oh, no motion, sir, correct.
No.
My bad, of course. All right, and J, appropriation transfers.
Appropriation transfers, one correction I need you to make on the bottom one. The account going for the police vehicle should be 4210-403 instead of 405, if you want to make that change. This is the car that the police department talked to you about several months ago. This is just making the change. And the second item, the $34,000 number, you may recall that we had budgeted using the municipal project grant for police vehicles. And then the man at the state disallowed us doing the upfitting with the state money. So, this is covering that upfitting charge.
All right, motion to approve the appropriation transfers with the account number noted, the change.
On the bottom entry, where's it, 4205, 40? Yeah, it's 403, that guy right there. 4205, 403, that, yeah. Yeah, correct. 4210, 40, it's going to be an absolute zoo for 100 years. We've known that as 4210-403, and it's going to be god knows what come July 1.
All right, that's changed. Okay, thank you. Second, thank you.
Counselor Diamond, seconded, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, and on to contingency transfer.
Actually, I have a revised sheet for it. Thank Michelle, she caught an error on the sheet. The bottom line total, when all is said and done, is going to be 102,630. And aside from the items that are mentioned on there, I have a question for you guys for certification purposes. That 26472 number on that last item on March 15th was a contingency appropriation for some additional modules that we bought. I really need to move that out to the capital project fund so that it marries up with the rest of the funds we paid to Munis. So, I don't know if you need to make a separate motion to, it's basically going to be appropriation transfer, basically taking it from contingency to operating transfer. So, if you want to make that motion maybe separately, so you got the two motions. You got the top ones, which are the salary adjustments. That $64,000 you see in the sheet that Anita prepared cleans up a lot of the crazy balances that are out there for a long time. A lot of the COVID expenses, some old FEMA projects, trying to kind of capture everything, clean that up. Again, as we move to this new world come July 1, we're trying to eliminate as many funky things as possible, trying to streamline things and clean up some of the lingering acts. So, the 166, the top part of the page, if you want to make a motion for that. And then the bottom one, that 26472, actually, if I want to make a separate motion to reassign that as an operating transfer, that would be great.
I want to change that first motion, please, for the top portion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, that the town managers hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purposes. Administrator salary adjustments, $11,416. Clerical union retro, $20,260. Police union retro, $62,825. Library union retro, $69,50. And reserve fund expenditures reimbursement, $64,695, for a total of 166,190.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, on that second.
I'd like to make a motion to reassign a previous appropriation to Tyler Technologies for $26,472 to operating transfers.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion?
Anthony, how's that coming with Munis? Is it all working well so far?
It's a struggle. I will tell you that Anita is immersed herself in this project and is here most nights till 6:30, 7 o'clock, trying to get this underway. There's some difficulties, there's some coordination issues with the folks at Munis. We tried to do a training session last week, and our budget wasn't loaded. Tried to run a budget to actual report, like you see here, wasn't loaded. Things that she supplied over the last six, seven months, some are getting in, some are not getting in. There's different, there's a training environment, a production environment, there's a lot of confusion. And it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, but.
Are you getting the customer service that you need from the company?
Previously, we were having some issues, and Anita took that into her own hands and went to our project manager's boss over his head and got some results. So, she's ferocious on this and really has embraced it and is, this has been her life work for the last six, eight months, and she's really doing a great job.
Has that been paid in full already?
Negative.
That's why we haven't seen her?
Yeah, yeah, she's, it's crazy, I'm sorry.
Anita's last name?
Mancini. M-A-N-C-I-N-I. She's a staff accountant.
Well, I can only imagine if you're having these issues, I can't imagine what the Board of Ed is going through.
Yeah.
Because their budget is just, I mean, it's bigger, they have more pieces to it and everything else. And if this is what you're feeling.
Yeah.
I personally would not pay them anything more at this point in time until you get the results that you need.
Where you want to be.
Right.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Yeah, no, we, yeah. It's going to be a challenge. Obviously, it's like, we've used these account numbers for the 30 years I've been here, and it's going to be all in a set of chart of accounts and all new vendors and all new processes. And it's going to automate some things that are manually currently, and it's going to be, you know, a good thing. It's just getting there is going to be a little bit of a nightmare, I think, but.
So, the juice is still worth the squeeze?
The juice is still worth the, yeah, I would say that's.
Okay, good.
But we're hoping the juice is worth the squeeze, put it that way.
Please, please thank Anita.
Yeah.
Yeah, she is, she's embraced this, and she's become the Munis connection and really working full time on this. And again, till 6, 7 o'clock every night, it's crazy.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Where are that 268-820 coming from?
If you add those projects from the 16275, the 19730, 4840, 88075, 183, and 26472.
I add them several times, I come up to 173, 692. I don't come up to your figure.
Contendence.
Unless something's wrong with my phone.
Could be your phone.
Anybody, you have calculator?
Yeah, we did it on the computers.
It's not, the figures aren't adding up.
What are you talking about, the 268-820?
No, I'm coming up, yeah, I'm coming up on 173, 692.
What, from the 162?
Yeah.
From the?
From the 16275 to the 26472. Add them up to see if I'm wrong. I just don't know where the figures coming from, unless my phone is off.
16275. 4840. 16472. 1630.
It's possible.
26472.
What do you come up with?
173, 692.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah?
It's not, it's not adding up to 268-820, sorry.
Plus 166, 190. That would be different.
Oh, is it the plus 166?
No, it would, no, it's not. So, are we taking the original balance and subtracting? We taking the 442 by 12 and subtracting the 173, 692?
Yeah.
Then you're going to get 268-820.
Right.
Oh. So, the order takes up the original balance, subtracts the expenditure so far, comes down.
There's an extra step, okay.
So, the amount appropriated to.
Thank you, Anthony.
No problem, Vince.
You're being watched.
Is 26472 was the Tyler Technology? That's what we reassigned.
Is what number?
26472.
Was reassigned to operating transfer.
Correct. All right, so we still have a second motion from this, if you require. So, it's the first, it's the second.
Well, we already did this.
Yeah, well, that was part of the, you're right, it was just that as the second, pulling that part out, right?
Right.
Okay, cut it, I want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, good, so all right, we can move on to Item L, approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Counselor Angeloni, it's first, it's seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay.
That was Angela, Angela Diamond, thank you.
All my love.
All my love. Except we did have a diamond to go tonight, which was, you know, there's no chance Canada to sneak in there tonight. Okay, all right, so we're moving on to Item 9, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any citizen statements and petition?
I just have one question for Anthony. So, the assessment, the car assessments on the tax bills, does that come from the towns or does that come from DMV?
It's a very good thing to bring up.
That comes from the DMV. I know it's been a hot topic.
A very hot topic.
And if you recall.
I received my today, Anthony, we'll have a conversation later.
If you recall, we presented that to you folks several months ago as a prelude, saying car tax bills are 25% up.
Right.
And obviously, you're right, it's still a lot of chatter that, you know, the towns.
Like, do I call Town Hall or do I call DMV? It's like, don't call Town Hall because we have nothing to do.
Well, at this point in the process.
Well, DMV's not going to help.
DMV's not going to help you at all. So, the process is DMV sends the town the information based on NADA values, if they're priced. Some vehicles come back unpriced, and the assessor's office has to price those manually, which is kind of a pain. Again, the 80% of the time on 20% of the dollars, ridiculous. But the figures come back to us from DMV, and again, the market value for used cars is up. This is supply and demand. There's very few people buying new cars because the chips and all the other issue brings the value of new car, of used cars up. And subsequently, if the value goes up, even though the mill rate was only minimally up this year, it results in a little bit higher tax bill.
Well, yeah, but actually, the car taxes were a little bit less than the mill rate because of the cap that the governor's office. Because the car tax, and it originally was proposed at 29, but that's not where it ended up. It ended up at 32 something. And it's a little bit less than what the mill rate is for real estate.
You are correct. It should be in your book there. You open your first page, summary page.
But, so, assessments are up, mill rate is down slightly, but it's still an increase.
Still an increase, just based, again, it's outside of our control. It just comes from the state, the DMV, you're 100% correct, and we're just kind of the recipients of, I mean, people do have an opportunity. There is a Board of Assessment Appeals process if you feel, again, maybe your particular, you know, 2012 Chevy may have things in dents and it may affect the value. But the base 2012 Chevy is based on NADA values, and that's the numbers that generate the tax bills. It is a hot topic, you're 100% correct.
And if people did not get their tax, they should be getting them, what, within?
They, again, we got a stack like that high, seriously, three inches of tax bills that got returned today. So, if you have a car, please expect to have a tax bill. And if you don't have a tax bill within the next day or two, call Town Hall.
Make a phone call.
484-6011, Tax Office. Give them your name and information, and they'll make sure the bill gets out to you. Send a copy if they need to.
Thank you very much, Anthony, appreciate it.
No problem.
All right.
There are some public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, please.
Bob Whitworth is saying, Mike Paul is resigning, wow, best wishes, thanks for serving in a tough spot, not an easy job at all. John O'Brien, thank you, Mike. Dottie Savastano, good luck to Mike P. John O'Brien?
Fire marshal.
Fire, Deputy Fire Marshal, then Dottie Savastano. Good luck on the food drive with the schools. Dottie Savastano, favorable thoughts on the ARPA funds earlier. Not so much about the sewer, can we ever consider a tax freeze for the seniors on fixed income? What happened to the letter that was to come with the tax bills? You have used 2.2 million of undesignated fund balance for various projects. You have been spending money like it's going out of style, and then we are going to bond about $90 million total. Are we done yet? Thanks for the pizza. We had a bill, bill on fire.
I'll fix the bill.
Cliff Potter, thanks, Mike, good luck. Cliff Potter's watching from Pennsylvania. Diane Ramsey, good luck, Michael, thank you for your service to the town.
Diane Ramsey?
Ramsey. R-A-M-S-E-Y.
And then, if you'd give us an update on the wonderful job of the food drive.
Yeah, I want to, the Board of Ed, Scott Shoemaker, all of the students, the principals. We raised 1,064 pounds of food, a half a ton of food in one day, or one week, whatever it is. And it was all sent to the food pantry, and they were really, really happy because it's restocked their shelves for at least, you know, four to six weeks, whatever.
Yeah, it's just a very strategic event where we brought in certain products in certain areas, and we really filled the shelves up as they needed, not with just kind of a willy-nilly type environment. And this is a time of year where the food, there's a lot of families that'd be surprised that are food insecure. As kids are out of school, sometimes meals aren't available. So, generally, less donations come in this time of year. We have a lot of donations towards that holiday season, but during summertime, people forget. So, this is a really great program. I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Superintendent Shoemaker and the principals of the schools that helped with this, I thank them for their time. I thank the citizens who donated for their generosity. This was a very great outcome, and we continue to do these wonderful programs for very people that we're serving here, our constituency. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Abelson. I'm sorry, Counselor Angeloni and Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1787.44]